...this plague. On behalf of the nations to the plague of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mr. Pillar, would you please, please kind of, if everyone would please, raise their hands. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gifts that you've given us. We pray that you watch over the activities of tonight's meeting, that they may be pleasing to you, and that we can work well on behalf of our citizens here in Houston. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, you have the minutes from the April 5th meeting. Can I, the changes or additions or corrections?
Motion to approve and suspend the reading of April 5th and 13th. Oh, please.
Okay.
This should be April 7th.
Oh, seven months.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second by PAC. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you. Okay, minutes are approved. Prove the agenda. Any changes or additions, corrections to the agenda? Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
And second by Stern. All in favor of approving this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you. Um, five, we're gonna get Jared on off the phone here, so we're gonna do the five B first. Sorry, Mike. Uh, engineers for water service installation. Jared, you're up.
Okay, all right. Water service installation stuff, I know you get that from the landowners on, on Tuesday night in that, in that area. I answered a couple quick questions that Mr. Pillar had. Uh, just an update. I got a call from Palmer's today. Got a couple conversations with Dave. They, uh, they're thinking that they might come in starting on Friday this week. Uh, they think it's a one or two day job to do that. So, Monty, I'll, I'll check in with them a little later this week, but I, I wanted to read, I mean, just email those folks or something, let them know that, um, they may be in there this week.
Jared, when you say one or two days, are they gonna start on Friday? Cut, shut water off, turn it back on for the weekend, finish on Monday?
They will not be turning people off.
They will not be turning people off. Okay?
No.
They won't hear anything.
We would, we would not let them leave trenches open. So, if they wanna dig up one or two and backfill them and compact them, that, that'd be fine with that.
There.
But yeah.
Jared, is everybody here?
Yes. Uh, any other questions on that part?
Do you want to clarify that?
Removal? Yeah, the, I want to just make clarification on the one property with the, the removal of the concrete with the curb stop that's in the driveway, Jared. So, the removal of the concrete is in the bid, but replacement of it is not, correct?
When we were originally speaking bids, we, we were trying to get a bid that included everything. And the only bid we got that included everything, if I remember, was from Ken. And then we got this bid from Palmer's that, that will do the worst, but asphalt concrete, heating, or not include that. Monty helped fight that out to me earlier this week, or, or at the end of last week when we were looking into this stuff. So, yeah, that the bid, the one that hired, is because that curb stop is in the middle of that driveway. So, the cutting and removal added a little cost, so.
And Jared, was there also an issue with one, the cost of one of them because their, the address was on the wrong side?
No, I'm not aware.
Was there?
But the address says it's on that side, but my understanding was they measured from, from Bluegrass Lane.
So, the additional expense there just because of the concrete removal?
That was my understanding, yes. I can do a little more digging, but that was what I was told that. And that, and that map they used is our PIS map has the correct address. Everything else we have in our system has the correct address, and we don't have to.
Okay. Other questions? Property owners, questions?
I still got a question about, you know, both, all this concrete is coming up from my garage. The other one is, if it's in the shrubs like I was told, the curb stop, it's the same price, and there's no old concrete to be taken out, cut out, but my, both my bids are the same price. I can't remember why it's going to sell.
Jared, we've got a landowner that is saying that he, he has two on his property and they're the same price. One, one of, one of the curb stops is in the driveway, it's the one with all the concrete, and then the other curb stop is not, but they're the same price. Is there a, is there a reason for that, or?
Well, then I don't know. I'll have to find out tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Okay.
He knows which ones those are. You know which ones those are, Jared?
I'll have to get it from Monty.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
Okay, Jared, fair enough.
I'll find out.
Sure.
And they did bid it on a per linear foot basis, so if, I mean, if it's less than what they had estimated, they'll just charge a per linear foot. They won't stick with that. If it's more than what they, you know, if they go 55 feet instead of 50, you'll be charged the extra five feet. If they go 45, you'll be charged five less, because it's not a per linear foot was their estimate. So, we'll clarify that though before this comes.
Josh, maybe?
What was solo on that? My spare lot. So, your spare lot, according to the feedback, correct me if I'm wrong, Jared, uh, they said that they would go with the same pricing that was presented for, for the, the property, because it was the same linear footage. So, they would, they would go ahead and I think it was 1750 or something like that. So, they would do it for that same price, if that's the direction we want to go. Okay?
After your meeting last Tuesday, I called Palmer's the next day and explained to them that we have a service line and vacant lots that was in the grass. And they said as long as the quantities were the same, if it's the same cost, the other ones in the vacant lots in the grass.
Okay.
So, yeah, they would do that lower cost.
Obviously, before Friday, you'll need to know that if you want, the landowner wants to do that or not, but you want that sooner, um, if they're coming in Friday. Jared?
They assume they're doing one extra, so if they're gonna bring the materials for it, um, I, I'd like to, just me and Monty work this out tomorrow, but assuming Monty knows the, the phone numbers and email addresses to get ahold of these folks, we'll clarify why numbers are different and just work it all out.
So, Josh is sooner, the sooner the better on knowing if you want to do that or not. Okay? Okay. Other questions? Yes, sir.
My property is on 12 feet, and if I'm gonna stick $3,800 in the ground, I want to guarantee that this is gonna work. If it doesn't work, I want it in the minutes that this is gonna work, because if it doesn't, I'll offer $3,800 back.
Jared, did you just hear the, the comment from our citizen?
I have a hard time hearing it.
Okay. He, he just said that he lives on, is, gave us his address, and he just said if he's gonna stick $3,800 into the ground, he wants a guarantee that this will work, and he wants that in the minutes.
From an engineering, from an engineering perspective, there is no guarantee that it's gonna work. The, the water mains and water service lines that we bury in, in this part of the world is probably eight feet deep. So, this is a backup plan. There, there are a lot of places that have insulated water service lines, and it does work. Uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm personally not gonna guarantee anything. We have great success doing it. Uh, so I've seen it work a ton of times, but I've never heard of it not working, but you're, you're not gonna get a guarantee. The only guarantee is to go and rip up the street, lower the water main, lower all the service lines, and that's probably more of like, you know, 20 grand per household than, than four grand per household to do it.
Well, this, this problem didn't just start. This problem started before the August reading was out there, when they put the water line at, at the sewer rim. And I was told by one of the city people that the reason we have this problem is they, they put the water line over the top of the sewer line. The water line isn't deep enough. So, why would I want to spend $3,800 and not do it? You know, next winter, I got my water line freezes up anyway. And what do I do?
Sir, what's your name?
Sam Schaefer.
Well, Mr. Schaefer, I guess I'm not sure what to tell you.
Well, if I spend $3,800 and my water line freezes up, I'll be back. Guaranteed.
I would, I would expect to be back.
Yes.
And everybody, anybody else that does the same thing. I agree. I would be, I'd be back if I were you too.
Has the depth of those water lines been verified? I mean, are we for sure they're eight feet deep?
Jared, the question is, is do we have verification of the depth of the water main and the services?
Uh, I do not have verification of that. Um, I would, don't, the best way to check that would be like after Dave, if, if we could pick a, a tape measure down, you can get close, you take, take a tape measure down the valve that all the curb stops, that'll get very close to how deep the, the main was. If I recall, I, I wanna say it really big. I, I don't even wanna say. Maybe it was five feet deep. Does that sound right, Dave?
I'm, I know we taped it that day, but I don't remember. I could give Ryan a quick call, see if he remembers.
So, is there anything like written in the, in this area that it's supposed to be eight feet? That's what it was supposed to be, and it's only five feet.
That's, you know, when I read the ordinance, it did spell out eight feet, and that's why I questioned the heat. I mean, what if we find out that it is an eight feet, then does that change anything?
It changes that. Um, are we gonna tear up the water main and put the water main deeper? Probably not. And we hope that the insulation of the mines works. Jared, go ahead.
That's, that is the alternative. If, if we want, if we wanna do it the right way, we'll plant a project, we'll rip up the street, we'll lower the water main, we'll lower the service lines. Um, but that is the, that is the long-term best picture, if that's the route that we wanna go. This is a, this is a very inexpensive backup plan that, that should work. It has worked.
So, is that, is that all based on an eight-foot depth that it should work, has worked, or, or is that at a five-foot depth? Let's just say for argument's sake, it is at five feet, and we insulated. Is, does that give you as much warm and fuzzy feeling?
At, at five-foot depth, with the way we got it shown, I feel pretty comfortable with it, that it's gonna work. The, the, at the, you know, seven feet deep, we usually don't get any freezing. There's years when it gets deeper, there's years when it gets less.
And this year, we had no stone cover, obviously, and about two weeks of prolonged subszero, but. Which final date?
Ryan thinks it was eight to eight and a half feet, but we'll verify tomorrow.
Okay. Did you hear that, Jared?
That they're, right now, they're eight to eight and a half feet deep?
That's just by memory, um, but we will double check that tomorrow.
And to be, to be honest, it's, 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 if that's how deep they truly are, it's a little bit surprising that they freeze, but certain, the cost gets deeper in certain types of soils. Any soils, it, it usually gets deeper. If we have high traffic in the roadway, it gets deeper. So, if, if they are truly eight, eight and a half, and they're still freezing, insulation should take care of it. Then I don't think any, there's any errors done. It's just an anomaly. We'll find out when we're checking it, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. You have questions?
And I know one concern that was brought up was if they get in there and find out, then set up $3,700 or $3,800, it costs $8,000 a person. Basically, they're doing the scope of work, and if it's gonna cost thousands of dollars more per person, they're definitely gonna contact us before anything happens, right?
Well, yeah, I, so I, I intended to have our guy there, John, on Friday when they start, and I guess we'll go through the first one, and with Dave and, and Monty, and if all of a sudden this goes out of control, I guess we'll have to have a talk to decide if we're gonna send them home or not.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Okay, that's the, that's the course. I hope they're eight feet tomorrow. Okay, moving on. Jared, anything else you need? You gonna stay online?
Well, yeah, well, let me, let me just finish one last thing real quick. Uh, the, the underwater tank project, you know, we're scheduled to open bid on the, the 29th. Um, we, we came up with a plan, you guys approved plan. Contractors called with questions or want to use different products. So, we, you know, issued a dandum, made clarification. Um, the, the, the only, the only thing that, um, has come up, it, it, just to remind you, you're assigned to have three contracts on it. An underground contract, a tank contract, and electrical contract. And we have the, the tank contract, or the, that schedule will be completed next year. You know, that, that's normal for a tank. The reservation is like next August or something. And we had, we had a plan for the underground improvement projects had to be done this year, partly just because we don't want them lingering around half work and I would half not. And, you know, we don't want them to just do bits and pieces and let these, these jobs go on and on and on. Now, with, with COVID going on, one of the, one of the scary things right now is the PVC pipe. There's a lot of 12-inch PVC pipes that can be needed on this project. And suppliers are telling us, they can't even get it right now. So, what I'm recommending is that, much as I don't like to do it, I, I think we need to make the completion date for the underground project just next year, the same as the completion date of the tank project. It, by setting the completion date, it gives us just a little more flexibility, and I, I think that the availability of pipe will eventually straighten itself out, and it, you know, we, hopefully can still get good prices on it. We'll never know until we open bid. Um, but with any dandum tomorrow that I'm gonna issue, I would like to clarify and make those completion dates full for 2022.
Okay. I think that's better anyhow, because it'll give us a better idea of the parade of funding ever getting from the state, too, don't you?
Someone still might come in and do both of them this year.
Okay.
But it's just, uh, I feel like having a little more control than that.
Yeah, I agree.
Jared, do you feel that any of the bidders may, may not have submitted bids based upon that timeframe, not being able to, to meet it?
Well, we've had two contractors call, two underground contractors call and ask if we would extend the completion date to next year, because they're just not confident they can get all the materials in this year.
Okay.
So, they will bid, knowing that the completion, they told us they were, knowing the completion date is gonna get pushed back.
Okay, fair enough. I just wanted to make sure somebody wasn't bidding, and, and then you did this addendum, so.
No, I would. Not that I know of.
Okay.
The other thing, um, the other thing is, uh, we didn't have a schedule for bidding on the 29th. Um, one of the contractors has asked us to move the, uh, the bid date back one week. Um, the reason for that is he's a tank contractor, and they, the, the way we have it designed is with a, a spread footing foundation, and there's a, there's some soil excavation that has to happen right in that spot, you know, below the, the footings. And they think that they can, you know, do a cheaper price by doing, by putting it on, um, you know, some type of piles or, or piers or whatever in lieu of a, a spread footing. And they, they would, basically, they, they, they want an extra week in order to evaluate that design, so they can bid it appropriately. What our, what our plans would basically say is that we can do a, a spread footing foundation design or approve equal, and with the same differential settlement calculations. So, but in order for them to do that, they need an extra week in order to, um, get their design done. I okay with it. I would be surprised if it saves a ton of money, um, but competition is good, and.
So, you may have a problem with moving that back? Okay, let's do it. Let's move it back then.
Okay.
Monty, is that right? Do you know if it works? Yes.
Monty, if you recall, we were kinda working back and forth on that bid date, because that would have been 30 days ahead of the June, um, um, June 6th council meeting. Well, they changed the requirement from 30 days to 45 days, so it doesn't really matter. Either way, it's not gonna jeopardize anything with the funding side. We have the money for both the design and construction artists here. So, assuming we get this, we'll have no hiccups in, in that regard.
Okay.
Are we into that, the first Monday of June, that meeting?
Actually, it's.
We're gonna miss it.
Actually, we were planning on first meeting in May, and then now it'll be the mid-May meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna miss that, we're, we're gonna miss that first meeting.
Okay.
It'll be May 17th, maybe.
Yeah. May 17th, got it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I can only update, I mean, otherwise, then I, I don't have bids at your next meeting. I'll be at your next meeting, but we, we, we may need to discuss some other things, but, uh, I don't have bids there till one.
Okay. Thanks, Jared. So, hold on, Jason's got a question. Jason's got a question for you. Hold on one second.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, in regards to the Bluegrass project, I mean, what we discussed at our last meeting compared to tonight, we've kinda left it a lot open-ended to these folks, in my opinion. Um, I know I brought up, if everything was, you know, we would propose a motion, but we're still not in, we're still answering questions with them planning on meeting your Friday. Do we wanna have some sort of special meeting to make that motion, or what? Any suggestions? The other board? I just feel we kinda leave these guys still open-ended yet, personally.
Well, we're open-ended too.
Well, I, I understand.
We would make a contingency motion.
Contingency, that it's.
Now, that we, we don't run into something really wonky on it. And, and I don't know what wonky would mean, because what I heard you say, Jared, is that even if it were five foot, you still feel that a high confidence level that insulating the mines would take care of this?
It's not the, it's not the perfect way to do it. The, the building things lower is, is obviously the appropriate way to do it. Our, our details and our plans show that we, we do allow this in cases. Sometimes you can't get seven feet of depth. Sometimes we're within two inches of a big stone sewer pipe that allows things. We, we put four inches of, of bored insulation around those things in most cases, and it works. But, insulating absolutely does work.
So, would your recommendation be if, if we find that it's only five feet deep, that maybe we should back up and, and reexamine this, and maybe just put it to a halt, uh, for, for the short term here, and, and maybe entertain a different solution and present that to our citizens here, and come up with a, a game plan, or, or maybe a Plan One and a Plan Two type thing? I know we've got this contractor lined up and everything like that, but we, we wanna give a very high degree of confidence that this project's gonna work.
Well, I, I wouldn't have recommended if I didn't think it was gonna work, but you're right. We, we all like to have guarantees or, or, you know, feel better about it. Is it possible for me to just work with Dave right away in the morning, and we'll figure out exactly what those bets are? And if, if Ryan's thinking that they're eight and a half, and I, I have zero concern at that, and not much concern at five feet, but if we find that one or two of them are, you know, way less than that, then I, I agree with you. I, but.
Well, I, the reason, the reason.
I don't know how you can make that a motion, but we, we just have to do just a couple, a little more double checking in the morning, I guess.
Well, we could, we could make a motion that we approve to move ahead unless there is a concern presented by our city engineer. And if there is a concern presented by the city engineer, then we would, we would pause the project.
I, I'm fine with that. I, I hope to have a answer for you tomorrow.
Jared, the, the point is, the point is, I, I'd like to see us make a motion tonight that, that captures and embodies this, so that we're not jumping through hoops at last minute, trying to pull together special meetings and, and things of that nature. If we have that discussion with all parties present tonight, we've got the citizens represented in the room, they're hearing all of this conversation. If we all mutually agree that that, that's an appropriate path forward, I'd feel a lot more comfortable leaving this meeting tonight with a, with a complete plan than, than to wait, even if you're doing it first thing tomorrow morning. I just wanna understand from an engineering standpoint, what an appropriate trigger point would be to, to put the kibosh on this temporarily?
Whether it's, whether it's 14 points.
Well, I don't even know if we have to define it as that. If, if we can simply state that we approve this moving forward, barring any concerns from you as an engineer, then I, I think that would be appropriate. And then you make the decision from, from your expertise whether or not you have concerns. And you, you've heard the voice of our citizens tonight that are impacted by this, and then certainly from us as well. Nobody wants to put in a project where there's a concern.
If, if we do some investigating later in the morning, and I'm concerned about it, I'll direct the contractor to hold off.
Okay.
We'll, we'll hit the brakes.
You guys in the audience, are you comfortable with a, a move like that? Yes, sir?
Will we, we, you know?
That, on whether or not it would move forward? Yeah, we, we can make sure that that happens.
Absolutely. Jared, this may sound simplistic, but you said that the insulation of the four-inch Jared, this may sound simplistic, but you said that the insulation is a four-inch board type insulation?
So what we, what we get is two layers of metal board insulation that we use two layers of it.
Okay, so again, I'm a simple, I'm a simple man. Does four layers, if it's, let's say it's five feet deep, do we do four layers of insulation? Do you know what I'm saying? If, I. Do we put more insulation to help the process? Or I don't, I don't know where you stop at your layers, but I'm just, they can allow, I guess.
I will, I will circle all construction days in the morning and I will ask that. If we're nervous about it, should we just double the insulation and be done with it? And insulation is cheap. It's really cheap.
Right.
So I will ask.
Okay.
How many's our questions from the citizens?
Did anybody else think about that double in insulation?
Well, it should work the first time. It's supposed to make up for the depth and not be proper. And he's right, every, everything I've heard too is it should work.
Okay, that's, well.
Maki, did you write any motions?
There were no, there wasn't a motion.
Right, but I mean, yeah, verbiage, if you will.
Uh, basically, the talk was to move ahead unless there's concerns expressed by the engineer. If there are concerns, the project will be halted until further review is completed.
So I'd like to make that into a motion.
Okay.
That, that very language.
Okay, so, but Maki just read, Mr. Pillar just made his motion. Need a second?
Second.
Second, my wolf, discussion. Isn't this already, I guess, already, I guess, voted on at last vote? The project was voted on, but not this particular language about stopping the project if there's question or concern tomorrow.
I just, I just felt bringing back up, there's a lot of, to me, there was a lot of open-ended questions with the majority of our general public here for that. I just felt that we needed to rediscover a little bit further. It seemed a little open-ended to me as well, so.
Hey, any more discussion? Roll call.
Miller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pat.
I.
Stern.
Aye.
Orenor.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay.
So we'll make sure that, that all the impacted citizens are also communicated with either way. Fair enough?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Moving on. Five, the new five B, bond refinance. Mike, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, welcome. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Can I just give you some results on the bond sale this morning? We are at lock-in. If you approve the resolution tonight prepared by Scott Wagner, sperm and Bismarck, his bond counsel, he had a point nine six interest rate for eight years, remaining eight years on the bond issue. You're refinancing two percent bonds up to a four percent bond in twenty-eight. So two to four percent bonds with a point three oh term bond and a point seven oh term bond. With the two combined and expenses, that's a point nine six net interest cost. So you're saving a hundred and five thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty-three cents over the, over the life of the bond issue. So that's money. And the bonds are callable on twenty-six. They're paid off in twenty-eight. If you have money in the sinking fund in twenty-six, you just pay it off and save another two years of interest. If you approve the resolution tonight, we will close and settle on May third and then Maki will get a call notice from Starion for the two thousand and fifteen bonds we're refunding and we'll pay those off on May twenty-seventh. You have to give thirty days of notice. So everything's in the works other than the resolution this evening. I've answered some questions.
Any questions for Mike? Well, a point nine six percent seems pretty darn good to me.
Yeah, I, you know, we can't take credit for that. We all know we're at bottom interest rates. People ask me when they're going up and, you know, we don't know, not coming down. But hopefully, well, we think they'll stick until, as I've said in numerous meetings, when Dr. Fauci gets on the TV and says we've got herd immunity, you might want to jump in the stock market for a lot of these things, but that's a ways away. So we're gonna stay with low interest rates. And that's, this is a result of those. You had a strong support from your local community banks, by the way, that's really priced.
Okay, any questions? If not, I'm taking a motion to save a hundred and nine thousand dollars.
So, look.
Yeah, motion by Wolf. Second, second, my stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Orenor.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for tuning in to work for the city again.
Thank you.
Can I just say, Mr. Jared?
Absolutely, yep.
You still hanging out with those guys from Fargo a little bit?
Unfortunately.
We have a mutual friend.
Yeah.
He's good friends.
I'm gonna see him every week actually.
You are, say hi for me.
I will.
I think Kathy's coming in for our birthday breakfast.
Good.
I'll say hi for you.
She's a great lady.
And I did, I'm out. Thanks, Muni.
You're welcome.
We'll be talking, yeah.
Okay, moving down to my need, A, update and condemnation proceedings on the previous property.
Yeah, as discussed at the previous meeting, they were going to come back on four nineteen with a plan as to how they were going to proceed. Got a letter from them today that they will not be keeping the property. They're going to let it go back to the bank. Discuss this with Pat since there is a mortgage on this. I'll work with their lender, which is North Dakota Housing Finance, to see how they'd like to proceed, if they want the city to remove the structure or what they'd like to do.
How many questions?
So there's no action required on us?
No action.
Tonight. A, update on condemnation proceedings with the Winkler property.
Okay, no action required. Again, just wanted to let you know that Mr. Winkler was in my office on April thirteenth. He has started, there has been activity over there as far as removing that trailer. The entry shed is gone, is my understanding, so. But he said he would not be done by April fifteenth, which was the timeframe we had given him. I told him so long as we are seeing some progress, he would be given a little bit of time to complete this, not that it stretches out for months.
Good, I'm glad of that. Thank you. How many questions for Mike? Okay, moving down to H C, condemnation hearing for Langor property. Is there anybody here to represent the Langor property?
Can I ask what the address is? That property?
Ten twenty-five and ten twenty-nine, First Avenue Northeast.
Thank you.
Okay. Nobody's here for public comment. Anybody here have any comments about those?
We should get a report from Lauren, like we did on the other one.
Absolutely.
The findings.
Mr. Wees, could you please give us a report on that property, what your, what your findings are?
On which?
On the Langor property, ten, ten twenty-five and ten twenty-nine.
Two trailer houses.
Yeah. I think you got to fill those out.
That's right.
Okay, so did you say that we have started to do some removal?
No.
Oh, it's a different one.
Okay.
Well.
Well, Mr. Langor, is this your property?
Yes.
Okay.
If you want to talk, you can do that.
Why don't you keep the report and, well.
Go ahead, you go with your report, Lauren.
Okay, I just wondered. Well, the photo's pretty much represented. It's, I mean, the buildings are in a condition that would be non, there's no way that you could certify as a livable property. The yards are in disarray. There's a lot of stuff everywhere. Like I said, I don't know how live it, you want me to get, but pictures pretty much tell the story. I don't know that anybody would want that to be a property they would live in. And I don't think it meets the criteria, but the. You want me to go beyond that?
If you have more, that's fine.
Okay. Well, like I said, that kind of sums it up. I don't want to, last time we got a little carried away, so.
That'd be cool. Yeah. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wees? So I guess, so I guess, like structural wise and in what shape?
Yeah, they're going, I mean, the rest, siding, uh, yeah, it's like you said, there's a lot of debris. There's no way that, generally, the basis on a condemnation from a city standpoint is that you basically can't prove that it's rehabitable type of property, or then you could rehab it for anything that would be even reasonably common, make any sense. And that's, and that's well, I think, well beyond that. Well, I know it is. I mean, there's, they're just in tough shape. Your work of mobile homes, which notoriously are a little bit softer on the construction aspect, you know, the thinner walls, the smaller, this is tough. And then you add all the rot and moisture damage and things of that nature. So like I said, there's nothing here that would meet code from the yard standpoint and construction standpoint and installation standpoint. If, you know, if you stack this all up and put it into fines, it would get very substantial. So unless there's, I guess, you know, generally why I've experienced in the past, if you can come to you with a, with a plan and say, here's what we're going to do, and then, I guess I can't stop people who spend the money uselessly, but generally it's, you know, and then it has to fall through. That's where it usually goes south, but. So these, these are by far two of the worst properties up there, so.
Okay, all right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Wees. Any questions for Lauren? Okay. All right, Mr. Langor, welcome.
Hi. Well, the green one just needs new siding, as far as I'm concerned. That one I'm just using as storage right now. While I try to get the other one livable and, you know, it's not in the best shape, but, you know, am I supposed to live in a tent? I mean, it's what I got for now. It's, it's what I got for now, so.
I have driven by those. They've been in this shape for some time.
Right.
There's been no activity on fixing up anything. It, it looks a mess. I can't imagine anyone living in either one of them or using them for storage. Because if you're storing in that green one, then there's nothing in there that you're going to be keeping because it's, it's shock.
I mean, it doesn't leak, it doesn't get water inside or anything. There's no mice.
I can't imagine there's not animals in it.
There's birds in the walls, but.
I mean.
No, I've been out of town for a year and a half, so.
And, and I'm, you know, that's not our.
Any correspondence?
This has been discussed a number of times and you've had opportunities to fix it up, is my understanding, and nothing's been done, as far as I can see. Not even cleanup really has been done.
Well, the stuff that's in the yard is for the, you know, finishing off the skirting and that sort of thing. I mean, that can definitely be cleaned up and I, you know.
But it hasn't been.
It hasn't. I've been out of town for a year and a half. I mean.
Have you been receiving any of our letters of correspondence?
I got your one just the other, the other day to show up here.
Okay. So what's your plan? If we don't condemn these, what would your plan be?
My plan would be to, you know, move into the, not the green one right now, but the other one. And, you know, I'm gonna finish getting the skirt in, hook the water up, and go from there. I got the electric hooked up.
Can I ask you? You don't have to answer. Where are you living now?
I've been staying with friends in Yule.
Maki, you, I don't know if anybody recalls when, when it called to move in that north trailer house. I can't remember recall when that was. That was right after the pavement of the street project.
Two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen.
I'm thinking seventeen.
Were you, I mean, were you living in the green one at that time, Colter?
Yeah.
I guess I've, I've been dealing with this property for about eight years now. And it's, to me, it's been a, a constant uphill battle from us cleaning up for you the first time.
Right.
And with quite a bit of disregard from you to our public employees when that was even happening. And then after that happened, it just got bad again almost immediately.
Right.
I don't, I.
Well, I really wasn't happy with the way that all went down. I mean.
You had, you had opportunity before that.
But I have to appreciate you guys who said, you know, patience with me, I suppose. And it has been a battle, but. Um, there's definitely issues there and, you know, I'm thirty-five, I'm willing to conform now, because nobody wants to be in this position.
Colter, we're not asking you to conform, but if I own a property in that your neighborhood, I think my value would probably suffer if I tried to sell it because of my neighborhood. And, and those two properties are a huge part of that equation.
I understand that.
This is, this is a hearing, and it's a public hearing. Is anybody else on, wants to speak for or against this property? Raise, tell your name, sir.
Adam Seiler. I live right across the street from the properties in question here and, obviously, my thought is to move, go ahead and get rid of these places. I've been living there for eight years. Nothing, I observe the same thing you guys do. And, Colter, you've been around. I've seen you over there. You haven't been gone for a year and a half. You pop in, you leave. I don't know what you do, that's neither here nor there, but.
Right.
Honestly, the neighborhood is getting, is sick of looking at it. And we've been, we've been dealing with you guys for a couple of years now, now, and.
Please just address us, though, and not, not Colter, please.
I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Uh, so I guess in short, yes, I, I'm here, Austin Lindman is here. We are here to voice our opinion that, yes, you guys get, you know, roll through with this and get rid of the trailers. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm right along with Adam. I've been there for.
Say your name, please.
Austin Lindman.
Thank you.
I've been there for ten years. They're just to the north, a few little ways. We've seen no improvement other than the time that cities up there clean things up and, like you already stated, they went back to really bad. I know that city's been after them for multiple years to get that trailer skirted and it's not happening, so.
Thank you. Anybody else in favor or opposition to this property? So Pat, at this time, do we then, as the board, vote on if we want to continue the condemnation process or if we want to give the landowner opportunity to clean it up?
Well, you can end your public hearing and then you can open the discussion for a vote as to how you want to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Any more public opinion? Hearing done, we'll close the hearing for the condemnation process for the Langor property. So, board. So, board, it's our decision then to continue with the condemnation process or to give the landowner opportunity to?
So what is the process if we would continue with condemnation?
A motion to condemn a set deadline for the action to be taken.
Okay.
Those would be the primary things.
So similar to what we did with the other properties?
Yeah.
That one? Okay.
I would make that motion for condemnation to continue.
The motion by Wolf.
With a, do we have to put a time limit on it?
I would put a time limit and I would substantiate the motion with the complaints of the building inspector's opinion on the structural quality of the, that seemed to be the biggest factor. Is that correct, Lauren?
Yeah.
Yeah, even if there was, the parts you gotta look at with the renovation, you're gonna have to leave all kind of co-expans to fix it. And I don't know if there's the wherewithal to do that, or it's, you know, it's not just to throw some stuff together and follow the date. Because now we're in a position where this is gonna be screwed nice, pretty carefully, so we want to have a call in time.
So we will add Lauren's comments to that motion with a, like a three-day timeframe?
That's up to you. I think that's plenty, and most days have been going a long time.
Okay, motion by Wolf to continue condemnation process. Using the language from our city inspector. And there's a thirty limit, thirty-day timeframe on this for the landowner to remove the property. Remove the trailers from the property and clean up the area, right?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Heller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenor.
Aye, motion carried. Colter, you need to get a plan together on how you're gonna take, clean that, clean those properties up.
And if he doesn't, in three days?
Then we revisit it and then we give him an option, I suppose, of us doing it and charging him? Or, or having someone do it?
Isn't that what the three days is?
That's what the three days is.
Do you have any questions for us?
I guess. No, I don't. I mean, if the neighbors have problems with the trailer houses, why did they move their trailer park? You know?
Well, they don't have a problem with all the trailer houses.
Well, right, just buying, but. I mean, having put scurrying on it, that's no.
Well, we've, we've had other ones removed, and we are in the process of removing more than just yours at this time condemnation. So it's not just, not just yours. We're not, we're not picking on you or trying to make you conform, just.
Which one? Did I have you both of them out of there, or which one?
Both.
Both, both.
Both, and figure out the problem.
Yeah, I've been without a paycheck for two years now, because Bates Electric went non-union with their contractors, so. I ain't got much. I don't have nothing to fall back on.
Sorry to hear that. You can stay in contact with Monty. It's, Monty or her is in the city hall if you want to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Still reports, water, sewer.
Nothing reported this time.
Oh, sorry. Yes, Lauren, we're done with you.
Thank you.
You can go home. Water, sewer, garbage.
Nothing reported this time.
Yeah, thank you. Streets, cemetery.
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, Dave, what's happening with the streets?
Grass is down, started sweeping again. Get out and all, start cleaning ditches, get ready for the mowing season, get garbage picked out of the ditches and.
Let's hope we can mow.
Hopefully can mow.
Finance, fire, library. Police, fire.
I just talked to Jim, and they are gonna be sending a vehicle down to get the, get it set up to use. They haven't been using the new vehicle yet, but they will be.
And then plan to get rid of the old one, we would.
We'd advertise it.
Just advertise again, yeah. Uh, HCD, Buster.
Well, I don't have too much to report on. You probably saw the nice article that Dan did in the paper last week on, you know, the change of, change of hands with some properties in town. And so that's good, of course, and that we're going to have those folks stay around, and that's what we want in terms of where things are at. We still do have the vacancy out at the Commerce Center. Once a pair leaves that facility relative to advertising for space for rental. But, so that probably won't be happening yet for a little bit before he actually can vacate there. Because I actually went over and met with them today to take a look at the remodel job that they're working on at the new place. There's a little work that needs to be done there yet, so it'll be, it'll be a little bit, yeah. So, that's good. We, we do have a couple of requests tomorrow that, that'll come up at our meeting for businesses that are requesting some help with Flexpace, which is a, that I'm sure the board in the past, I mean, they've honored everything we've put forward up to this point in time. And I'm sure they will honor that again looking forward, so. Considering everything, I'd say things are looking not too bad, not too bad.
Thank you. Okay. Moving down to ten A, sales tax collection agreement with the North Dakota Tax Commissioner. You all saw the letter from, to Monty from Ron Roshenberger's office. Monty, is there anything else you want to? This has been a two-year agreement.
Yeah, it's for the Viennium. Same as the last time, thirty-five dollars per permit year, three percent of the tax collected, whichever is less.
And you need a motion to?
Yes, please.
Make a motion, we move forward to sign into the agreement with our tax commissioner.
Motion by Heller.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Do you need a roll call for that?
Please.
Roll call, please.
Heller, aye. Stern. Pat.
Aye.
Aye.
Omenor.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Eleven A, sale of city property, five eighteen Fourth Avenue, Northwest. Northwest. Northeast. Couple of houses, property down south of the police station. And you saw the numbers that we have that we have so far here. These should be the final numbers.
These should be the final.
I've had, so this is, these are two lots, and the garage on this property is pretty large. I've had at least a half a dozen people call me or contact me wanting to know when we're gonna put this up for bid, because they are excited to get a storage garage. Those of you that have not seen it, it's four stalls wide. It's got a double door, double garage door, a single garage door, then a blank door. There's no blank, but, so there's, but it's four wide. Got concrete access from the alley. It's insulated, wired. And the concrete on the inside is in pretty darn good shape as well, so. I think we need to put, if it's up for bid, do we do it for?
If you want to set a minimum.
I think we should set a minimum of five. I would say at least ten thousand dollars, unless anybody has any other thoughts. I'm not looking at making a killing off this property. Obviously, it's a, it's a urban renewal rehab type property for us. And it's already looks all heck of a lot better over there. Dave's guys have done a great job of this, as well as the police and Slatton's people. But to build that garage and to have two lots with water and sewer, you know, you're looking at thirty-five, forty thousand dollars to do that, so. I would, you know, starting, starting bids at ten thousand dollars. I think it's, you know, we, we'd make eighteen hundred bucks as a city, you know. Like I said, we don't do these projects to get rich. We do it to make our community better, so. Unless anybody has any other thoughts on setting a different price for bids.
So, Monty, you had suggested for, for conversation, then, the top two bidders get involved in?
Yeah.
A bidding war or?
An auction type, yeah, if you want to do that.
I, I like that. I know a property up at the lake that I just happened at, and the seller's got a heck of a lot more money than I thought they were going, because two people wanted it pretty badly.
How do you facilitate that?
Basically, they would just meet here and go back and forth.
So you become an auctioneer?
No, no, Gary would.
It'd be pretty ugly. No. Yeah, we just do it here, I guess. And we're ready to do that?
Yeah, I haven't tried to get it advertised yet this week.
Okay.
I guess how many?
Would it help to put a sign in the yard, like a for-sale sign saying, "Contact the city"? I think not everybody reads the paper.
We can.
I think it'd be.
We can put it on our social media.
Market it a little bit more, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess it's a matter of if you want to do the auction, or you just want to take the highest bid.
I, I think.
You say we're not in it to make money, but.
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 I don't think there's a lot of added effort to do the auction portion of it.
No.
Nothing else, so I'd be in favor of that.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion out, Monty, then. Get this property advertised.
So there's just one question.
Yes.
So is there any kind of specials or anything, except we have a water bill as a way to pay on this or something?
No, the specials were canceled when, when we got it back from, or this year's specials. There will be specials that the new buyer will assume. That'll be certified next, that'll be certified next fall or November. So, yeah, there will be specials.
From the size of the project?
Yeah, from all those projects.
Okay, so then you said it got, I guess.
Just this, just this current year's specials were canceled, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Well, would be the specials on the two lots.
We don't, we don't know.
I want to say it was around twenty-eight hundred. But I'll, I'll look it up. It'll all be part of, part of the advertising with what the specials, outstanding specials are, so that everybody's aware.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Wolf to get the property advertised.
Advertise for three weeks.
Yeah.
Top two bidders will come in ten days after the opening and.
Sure.
The auction bid, okay.
Motion.
Good motion, ma'am.
Second.
Second by Pat. Discussion. All of you, say aye.
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 Post. Thank you. Okay, that takes us down. That's, that's the end of the agenda. Approval of bills.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf to approve paid bills.
Second.
Second by Heller. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Heller.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenor.
Aye, motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.